Really?
Good evening.
Yeah.
I want to welcome everybody to the Monday, June 13th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Is anyone here for open forum? Seeing nobody's here for open forum, we have an appointment at 6 o'clock. Do you want to...
We are, um...
Mr. Clerk?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, we are going to go to our first action item first.
Okay.
And I make a motion to appoint Karen Harren to the Finance Committee for the period of June 13th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion is made second. Any discussion?
No, thank you, Karen, for volunteering.
Welcome.
In spite of your relationship with the Fire Chief, we'll go ahead and approve that.
He didn't say anything.
There he did.
So do I need to get Michelle now? Have you voted?
We haven't voted yet, so, yep. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Take Lee.
You don't like swearing on it now?
Running right down. They don't want her to leave, right? Change your mind. You're in. Right. All right, so we have a 6:00 PM joint meeting with...
With them, but you'll need her...
You're gonna... Oh, she... Oh, that's why she's running down.
Yes, yes.
Oh, wow.
Michelle needs... She just gets sworn in. Once she's back, they back...
You have four here. They have a quorum.
Well, we weren't necessarily assuming that.
Okay.
Why don't we wait for her? It'd be polite to have her come back.
Absolutely.
Why don't we have the Chair and the Vice Chair sit up front?
Yep.
Dan? Dan and Dave? Guys just want to sit up front, please? You guys. Take your time, you know, don't hurry up there.
It's a long walk.
Stroll. So the reason for the joint meeting is that for line name transfers that can be done between May 1st and July 15th, votes by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee are necessary. They can handle reserve fund transfers by themselves. The line name transfers require either separate meetings and separate votes, or very nicely, we get everything done one night with everybody.
Okay. Will they have to open their meeting when she gets back?
However, informally or informally, they open their meeting, yes. They're here, they've got a quorum, they exist.
Sounds like they're open to me.
Sounds like it to me as well.
Mr. Chair, do you have any discussion you'd like to get out of the way before the end of our meeting?
Um, no, no, I don't. We've got to make a lot of announcements.
We're gonna hold you today.
All right, a lot of announcements.
We do have announcements.
A lot of things going on in East Door. But I don't have any updated information. I don't know those announcements, but we'll hold at the end so everybody anticipates.
Are we gonna allow the Vice Chair to talk about Thursday night?
That's one of the major announcements, right? We held off last meeting, right? We waited for Carol to get back.
We probably...
We got it, no? It's on the list.
I saw it. Well, that doesn't mean we have it.
All right.
I think I saw it in the packet.
It is. Oh, you actually saw it, you actually...
I think so.
That was last year's. They just scratched...
Yeah, no, I did see it, because I think the Fire Chief said no.
I keep missing things. What did I say, no or not?
Dale and the Duds, Thursday night?
I said no.
All right, must have been the Police Chair.
It was one of them. Do you have, like, a song and dance?
Nope, I have... I do not want me singing nor dancing. We can go through...
Mr. Chairman, you want to start with the action items?
Yes, fine with me. We'll get through whatever. All right, Mr. Clerk, I'm running through.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to update on bids for town property liability workman's compensation insurance and what the contract bids are due here next Monday, June 20th, 2022.
Okay, so an update, I'm assuming that's huge?
So, yeah, we've had a few questions from the various vendors who might be interested in sending bids in. They all know about the deadline. I will be here on the 20th despite the holiday, because that's when our insurance advisor had picked a date, so...
Because that's a holiday, do we have to extend it to non-holiday? No?
It can be on a holiday.
Okay.
So, my... What I would need, however, is probably late in the week, a separate meeting of the Board of Selectmen, because we'll need to award the contract for the insurance. Carol won't be there or here the week of the 27th, so I wanted to try and have the board meet.
Not gonna be here, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
I think we should have the 27th.
Yeah, but you can't, can you? Because Peter has to recuse himself.
Right, let's take...
I mean, you could do the rule of necessity, but...
Oh, we could, you know...
You could just vote alone.
We could just not have you go away again.
Stand alone.
Why don't we look at, um, also the 20th?
Yeah, I mean, our insurance advisor's gonna probably have to take a couple of days, so either the 20th, the 23rd would be helpful.
Yep, that works.
In the middle, in the evening, or you want late afternoon?
I'm available anytime that day.
Mr. Chairman, on Thursday, 23rd?
On any particular time?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Those could be, uh, 4:00?
Thursday, 23rd at 4:00 PM.
Okay.
That's good.
We can meet earlier if you want. I'm not... I'm off that day. It's up to you.
I will say 4:00. Now we can change it.
Yeah.
That's where things stand now. And I'll keep, you know, obviously, once the bids are in, I'll keep your price at what... So you're... You're not gonna be given this information at 3:45.
Right.
That's good.
And we have to make a decision by the 30th, right?
Yeah.
That's the whole...
Because we need insurance policy for the town.
Good idea.
Or we don't, but, you know...
Yeah.
Bad things happen.
All right. Yep, I was just... So are we inviting the people that are bidding in, or is it just the board speaking to...
Yeah, I would expect that you're just, you know, we'll get... I don't know whether Ryan Murphy's gonna be able to be here or not. I have to work out time, but at least we would get something from him towards a recommendation.
All right.
Any idea or feeling on how many bids we're anticipating?
Maybe three.
Maybe three.
That's good. All right, yep. All right, make... I'll attain the motion. The date. Time?
Yep, we'll motion that we'll have a special meeting to cover the insurance bids on the June 23rd at 4:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion by the request of the Conservation Commission for a step increase for the new part-time senior clerk position.
All right, motion made, I guess.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Simply, I know that the... Both the Agent and the Conservation Commission Chair are recommending Joanne Cartelli, start at Step 3 rather than the usual Step 1, based on her many years of experience, both in Bridgewater and in Kingston, working at town halls there, obviously not the exact position. She's familiar with how towns operate. She's familiar with the office environment, I think. And finding individuals with that type of experience to take on this work in this day and age can be difficult, and I want to encourage her and others to apply for these jobs. So I am recommending, along with the Chair and with the Agent, Step 3, which is allowed under the union contract.
And how many hours is that gonna be?
It's 18 and a half.
And I spoke to Claire briefly after I saw the information come across, and the board definitely has a need for those hours in the clerical, and it seems like the background that this candidate has is very good, you know, so that I think it helps move that board along, helps Alex in his continuing quest to get himself educated in some of the classwork that he still wants to conduct in, and, you know, hopefully get that conservation in a position where they continue to move forward. Any EPs help, we'll continue there as well, so I agree with the situation.
Yeah, it's hard to hire people in municipal government these days, so I have no problem with raising that a little bit.
Okay.
This is made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2022, 6:30 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Um, I'll recuse myself or abstain on this one since I wasn't here.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the May 23rd, 2022, 7:25 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Now, second. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 3rd, 2022, 11:30 AM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
I have to say it again. It's a bad week.
That's a bad week. It's a bad week. I second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Chairman, I suggest we move on to the joint meeting.
Move back to the joint meeting, sure.
Welcome, Karen. You're all official in all that stuff now? Great, thank you. Thank you for coming to help us.
Okay. Guys? How we doing? Good? Ready to go?
We're good.
Okay. Want to start us off, Charlie, with just being cap what we said?
So we are... So as I mentioned, for line name transfers requires votes both by the Finance Committee and the Selectmen. Simply in terms of logistics, it's easier if we have a joint meeting, but there's still separate votes. It's not a combined vote.
Okay.
I believe the line transfers are here under Appointment 1. First one, I believe, is the 38,500. And David, you have that?
Yes, yep. I have 38, yep.
38,000, 70,000, 90,000, and...
30,000.
30,000.
I'm not gonna try and read every single line that it's going from or to. Not that we'd be here all night, but it'd be long enough. But... So I don't know how you want it to signify.
We can just go high level.
Okay.
That's fine with the board?
Fine.
Yep. Everybody has copies in front of them, so as printed, everybody can understand it. And with the new member here, who hasn't been privy to all the working so far, we do have a quorum already, so she'll probably abstain, and we'll have four votes.
Unless you go tell people to vote.
I don't think you hear the beginning of that, Dave.
No, we just said since they're... You're new, we can just have you abstain tonight, because we do have four here. That way, since this is all, yeah.
Well, the first one is from... Starts off from a variety of sources, including Police Department, data processing, the Board of Selectmen's Office, Concomitant Planning, and goes through another variety of departments, including Accounting, Conservation, Planning, Inspectors, Police Department, back to IT, and back to the Selectmen's Office. But they're all separate line names. This is a total of 38,500.
Do you want us to motion then first and...
Well, both of you, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so for Finance Committee, we'll entertain a motion to approve the year-end transfer of $38,500 as printed?
I'll make a motion to move it as printed.
Second. Motion by Dave, second by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second one is for 70,500. These are line transfers within the Fire Department.
Entertain.
I'll make a motion to approve as printed the request for $30,400.
So motion by Dave, second by Lucia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next one is for $90,039.49. These are coming from Animal Control, Snow and Ice, and Health Insurance, and going to a wide variety of line names, everything from Town Accountant Training to the Gasoline, Diesel, Fuel Account, to Street Lights and Traffic Signals, to name a few of them.
So I'll make a motion to approve the $90,039.49 transfer as printed?
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Lucia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is for $30,400. These are going, I believe, from various DPW line items to other DPW line items, including the school facilities, meaning oil and gas account.
I don't have that.
Which one was that, Charlie?
This is for 30,400.
I think you just...
Going from... The first line at the top is Sewer Labor Payroll. First line, where it's going is the school facilities.
All right, make a motion to approve 30,400 as printed?
For a motion by Dave, second Lucia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we require your signatures on there, and then the board can hold its votes on all four.
We can...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the transfer for $38,500, $70,500, $90,39.49, $30,400.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
They'll sign, and we'll get them over to you.
So they'll sign, we'll walk them over.
Yep.
Do we have, what, a total of four?
Total, yeah.
All right, thanks, guys.
Are you going somewhere else for your reserve fund votes, or...
We can just do it at the tail end of this, or can we just do it right now?
Yeah.
Okay. If you don't mind, we have a... A reserve fund request that has been presented by the DPW, $45,000, being requested from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to be transferred to the curbside recycle account.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfer from the Reserve Fund as printed here.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Lucia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I think that's all you needed for us, right?
You have all the reserve funds?
That's the only one that I have. I have a bunch of them.
Okay. So I was the only one that is caught up in the...
I think that there are others, but I don't think that we have the copies to vote on tonight.
Okay.
We may just have to have another... We'll have to have another quick meeting, separate.
Yeah, because, I mean, I knew there were... I know there were others.
There were three others, yeah.
So this is the only reserve fund? You can give me a minute. Sorry.
Might save us time. It's all about the efficiency of municipal government.
See, having to come for another meeting. I don't know, I feel like our ratings are gonna slip.
Yeah, I'm not telling you.
You know, while we wait, we may move on with more action items.
You got a date or something?
Not yet. Working on it. You know, people, you know, with this is rating week.
Yeah, I know.
People don't want to see downtime.
That's right.
The money we're paying per hour. Celtics are running a couple of hours.
Yeah, I love four. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Karen Thompson from the ARPA Committee effective June 13th, 2022.
Second.
Second. Motion is made second. Any discussion?
No. Hopefully Karen will come back to us at another time and join one of our other committees.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Nancy DeChambeau from the ARPA Committee effective June 13th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is made second. Discussion?
Same thing. Hope Nancy will find time to come back to us. But this time, Mr. Chairman, currently we have lost two of the original nine that we had on that committee. Question comes up, shall we replace those? Should we go with seven? Plus, we have three consultants also on that committee. My feeling is that would be fine.
I think seven's okay. I mean, we put everybody on because we thought this could happen, so...
And there are recommendations for the board. It's not that they need even our...
If they come back and say they need more, we can always request help.
Yep, and you've got... And they've met once already, right?
They have met. Their next meeting is scheduled for, I think, July 11th.
July 13th.
July 13th. And we have received... Intent to appear with you people from two of the three Plymouth County Commissioners and from the County Treasurer. He will be at that meeting to give them direction on their portion of the ARPA money that was raised from the County Commissioners and Treasurer, so he will be here to sit with them for that meeting.
Perfect. All right, motion is made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from Fire Chief Tim Harren for the quarterly ambulance billing abatement as of June 2022 in the amount of $25,074.10.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Chief, have anything to say?
It's just the quarterly abatement of bills that were deemed non-collectible.
You got it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one we'll have to wait for... I think the rest we'll have to wait for the county administrator. We can go to number 12.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve picnic tables to be moved from Jones Pond to the community center.
Second.
All right, motion's made second.
There's a young lady up there that has the... She had put these picnic tables, I believe there's two of them. She had put them in there before, and they should rather bring them down to the community center where they'd be used.
Okay.
It's a neighborhood thing, I believe.
Must be.
And EPW is aware of it, so...
With some technical... That's it? All right. Motion's made second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, let's get back to our joint meeting.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for the... To transfer from the Reserve Fund $4,575 for the printing of town reports and warrants.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Lucia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to transfer from the Reserve Fund $21,180, and that is to pay for services with interim town accountant between 6:30, 2021, and the training of the new town accountant to September 2021.
Motion by Dave.
Says 21, okay, should be 22 on hand.
No, 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 no.
Oh, you already paid for it?
No, it was...
Well, this is to pay for a lot here.
It was to pay for last year, then this fiscal year, so it'd be 21. That's correct. So motion by Dave, second by Lucia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to transfer from the Reserve Fund $8,500, pay for the Police Department Sargent Assessment Center.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Lucia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next time, I'm gonna bring my glasses.
So I think your business with each other is all set.
We're good?
I think so.
All right, we are good.
Charlie, we're down to action item number nine.
Okay, so...
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
It's all ours, Dave. It's all ours.
This is the ARPA grant agreement with...
Right, so what this does is formalize our ability to apply for grants to Plymouth County for their share of our funds, and then whatever duties and responsibilities they would have reviewing and such. But we need it signed and ordered. In fact, we have two applications in right now, one for the 350 for the Santeri Sewer, the other's for, I think, like 325 for the ambulance.
We need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Chairman, I make a motion that the board grant the ARPA grant agreement with Plymouth County.
Second.
All right, motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Recreation Commission American Rescue Plan Act reimbursement request.
Second.
Motion made second, yeah.
Sorry, I'm trying to get ahead of here. Which... I'm sorry, which one are we doing now?
On the...
Number 10.
10, yes. So my talk in Recreation Committee a few weeks ago, we know they had an event here on the ball fields last summer. They said... The Chair indicated at some point there had been some conversation about the possibility of getting their account, not obviously the committee members, but they have the account that they spend money out of, to cover the costs of the event under the CARES Act. Obviously, CARES Act, that funding is long gone, but they're still eligible, if they wanted to, to make an application in under ARPA, because the timeframe fits within the ARPA timeframe. I'm not sure whether any of the board members had talked with them, whether the board as a whole had talked with them, but where we are situated right now with getting close to the point of having departments apply for ARPA funding, they could do that as part of the normal routine at other departments. I just didn't know if the board had any immediate views of whether it made sense for them to apply at all. I'm not gonna go back and review whatever conversations happened last fall or anything. Really, that's moot at this point. It's really whether they would be encouraged to apply for ARPA funding or not.
Yeah, so we did... We had conversations, but, you know, you can imagine, we had conversations with numerous people as the position changed a little bit here and there. So I would say, I mean, just my suggestion would be, you know, they... I mean, it's just, it's short, it's probably smaller amount of money than what we're gonna see from some of these other groups, but I would say, yeah, that would be a... You know, I would be certainly in favor of them requesting it through the program. I know they got a couple of other projects, too, that they're gonna throw in as well. And again, we just talked about it, I think, when we got out of the room. You know, once the committee's ready to accept those, you know, it'd be up to them to take a look.
And then that's what I'll do in comparison.
I agree. Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Recreation Commission to the American Rescue Plan Act reimbursement request.
So they would file an application?
Yes, the application, which they haven't seen yet, correct?
Correct.
Right, we don't have that yet.
That's coming out next week.
Soon.
Soon, that's the best that we can do.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept a salary schedule for primary plumbing, gas inspector, Inspector of wire.
The point here would be that under the salary wage schedule that the board sets every year, the main inspectors, other than Patrick, are paid on a per-month basis. And there's no leeway for, okay, if someone needs a vacation, if someone is sick for a time period. And we run into circumstances during this past fiscal year that those are the case. What this would do is change it, so they would be paid on a weekly basis. If someone... None of these individuals get paid vacation, paid sick leave, right? They're either working that week, or they're not working that week. They're either working that week or they're not working that week. So if someone needed to be on sick leave unpaid or vacation, we would have then one of the assistants step in, they would be paid that amount on a per weekly basis. They do get an annual stipend, the assistants, so that they are available. So if we have, you know, if we have a situation where the main plumbing inspector, the main wiring inspector cannot perform the job, they've said, okay, return for a couple thousand dollars a year, we'll be available. So we would make that phone call to them and say, okay, you're gonna be on the week of the 20th, for instance, covering for the main plumbing or wiring inspector. This will help some... Clear some up, some payroll questions we ran into during the course of the year. In addition, Patrick would have the ability to hire a second assistant if necessary, not for building, but sort of a backup backup, so that if person... Assistant number one wasn't available, assistant two would be.
No, currently how many we have right now?
We have one on... We have the main one for plumbing and gas, and then a main one for wiring, then an assistant for each of them. And I've talked to Patrick about this, and he's in full agreement with going with this procedure.
Yeah, sounds fine to me.
Yeah.
All right, motion's made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, should we go into our public hearing?
Since 6:30, yeah.
Opening public hearing for the town of East Bridgewater Board of Selectmen for a removing of poles under the provisions of Chapter 166 General Laws. In any additions thereto or amendments thereof, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on June 13, 2022 at 6:30 p.m. on a petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England. Request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting figures along and across the following public way, North Central Street. The town is requesting to remove trees that are currently attached to poles on North Central Street and guy wires. So National Grid must install new stub poles 36 through 89, 37-89, and 39-89 in order to remove the guy wires attached to those trees. The hearing will be held at East Bridgewater Town Hall, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass. 02333.
Thank you. We just... That's it?
I don't know if you... Is someone from National Grid here?
Anyone here from National Grid or Verizon?
John, do they usually come?
They've been here.
Only if they're gonna set new poles, a relocation, looking for a new easement. These are trees that were actually... Have already been removed. They're part of a National Grid utility risk program. The trees were removed. And previously, historically, Verizon, National Grid or Verizon would guide adjacent poles to trees. Sort of been working over the last decade to stop that process, and now they actually have a guide. But in these two circumstances, years and years ago, the support guys were actually lagged into these poles. So now, on the... At least to the section of North Central Street, there are two large trunks that remain. And I think they're essentially requesting that permission be granted to set a new guide pole in lieu of the tree so that they can remove the remainder of the trunks of the trees. If I was speaking for National Grid.
Under your appointments, you do have the diagram showing the locations. These are in front of 299 to 199 North Central Street.
Right, so we just need to... Do you need to make a motion for...
Is anybody here to speak to this?
Oh, there's some residents here. Would you like to come up and say something, or is there any questions you have, or...
Well, they're in front of our house.
Okay.
That's why we came.
Oh, all right.
And you know on 199, it's 227. I mean, 299, it's actually 227.
That's where the house is. 299 is farther up the street.
There's actually two locations that have guidelines that have to be removed, so...
Right. There's one in the corner, and one farther down, towards the center. And that's one, there's one more down below. The market's... Just one right on the corner.
Are any of these requests to put in new... Are these requests to put in poles?
That's what I have it. Yes.
It's requests of permission to locate poles.
To locate the poles to act as the guy in lieu of trunks that are currently...
They're installing new stub poles. And the stub poles will be across the... So the current poles, E36, E37, et cetera, are on the south side. North central, some poles on the north end.
So in the past, Charlie, I mean, I've only seen a couple of these, but they definitely had a representative from National Grid here.
Okay. Do you have any concerns about the guy poles being placed?
No.
Okay.
Oh, we're good over there?
They're just informational.
All right, all right, I didn't know they had an issue. That would be different.
Yeah, okay, no issue.
All right.
Point of clarification.
That's... That's good. I like those. Those are much better than alternative route. All right.
Make a motion that we close the public hearings.
Second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the provisions of the poll hearing. As read.
Are you done?
Yes, I am.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Moving along.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the following board committee member reappointments as written with the exception of Joel Thomas as constable, who pays his own bond. And Mr. Sealer, could you explain that?
So, but the board, of course, the town had just voted last month to elect for our last terms, the constables. We'll be switching over in 2025 to an appointment process. I think the board is going to want to work with town council to review how they want to handle the appointment process in terms of number of people, residents, non-residents, and review what the duties are for those constables in a sense of what they would... Services they would perform for the town, what services they would perform for anyone else, and so the need for how many we would have. Council's not available tonight. We... You know, we can discuss with him at a later date, but obviously with the three-year terms, there's no sense of urgency yet. We did a... The board, I think the town meeting did elect two, not town meeting, but town election was two. I think maybe there was a write-in that had some votes. So we have a total of three available to the town's people right now.
Okay. All right, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, you did second it. Any more questions, or...
No, we want to thank all the people that are coming back again, and we appreciate that. Again, while we're talking about all these boards, we are still looking for two more people to come onto the finance committee and think about it and get your requests into the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee, and we will appreciate it.
Thanks, David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an event permit application for a one-day liquor license at 1 Nielsen Avenue for summer concerts series July 10, July 24, August 7, August 21, September 11, October 2, and October 16 from 1 p.m. to 6 p.m.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just the only discussion, Mr. Chairman, as I've mentioned before, we have to just make sure that they realize anyone that will be serving liquor on these days has to be tip certified.
Anything for sending a letter or something along those lines?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, reluctantly, I will approve the event permit application for Dale and the Duds concert on the Common on this Thursday, June 16, 2022, from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m.
Second.
Permitting.
Motion's been made and seconded. I will allow only Ms. Julius to comment on this. Other than that, no one else gets to comment.
Um... I laughed when I saw Recreation Commission put down for how many years it had been going on, and I think it said 12. And I looked at Dale and I said, this was before Hannah was born anyway, and Hannah's gonna be 30 this year. And Luke, his youngest, has just turned 40, and we're pretty sure Luke was going as a toddler. So this event is at least 35 years going strong, other than those two years we had to miss because of that stupid pandemic. Ruined everything. So I am...
And they've been together for over 50?
This is their 50th year together as a band. They've had just some changes recently. But, yeah, still Dale and the Duds, still going strong. Dale says this is his last year. I'll believe it when I see it. I think he's just gonna pull like Garth Brooks and like retire and then come back.
Numerous times.
Yeah, or Cher, like who did... How many farewell tours did she do?
He's younger than the Stones.
And younger than Paul McCartney.
I know he's gonna be back next year because he's already booked himself.
That will be the... The clothes.
Right.
That will be the clothes of their 50th year. He said, we'll see. We'll see. So yes, I heartily endorse this event.
That's great. Yes, and I do too. I think it's gonna be a fun event, and I'm looking forward to it. Yep, and perfectly flavored will be there as well.
Food.
That's great. I hope everybody comes out.
People can bring their own snacks.
Absolutely. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That's the end of the action items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Announcements?
Well, in terms of the board's schedule, right now you have, obviously, you just voted June 23 at 4 p.m. During the summer, the board meets generally once a month, correct? So you do not have a regular meeting on June 27, so we'll skip that. Your next regular meeting would be July 11, and then the next one, unless circumstances require it, would be on August 8.
Historically, historically, the board does add a few more meetings during the summer.
Stuff happens, I know.
Yep.
Town Hall will be closed this Monday in honor of Juneteenth, a state and federal holiday.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, no, he got it. Thank you.
Yeah, we had one more. The rabies clinic is, what, tonight, right now, right?
It's like, hurry up.
Oh, wow.
You have 18 minutes.
Probably should have did this first.
And it's dogs only from 6 to 7, so if you were gonna bring your cat, you missed the... Missed the mark.
All right, well, that's a 20-minute plug.
Right. In terms of other announcements, it's actually a full slate. We've got the library, 125th anniversary is on Wednesday, June 15, from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. So party like, I think they said, 1897 is the start date. Dale and the Duds, obviously, on June 16, and then we have the Sidney Craven Memorial Fund Annual 5K 2-2 Run and Sparkle Fest on Saturday, June 18 at 9 a.m.
Lots of stuff this week.
Want to do something in East Bridgewater, this is the week.
This is the week, right.
Good week.
Be there. Great, thank you. Thank you both. Board discussion?
How about the... Do we have an update on North Bedford Zoo?
We had our, you know, working group session last week. I know that Steve and Fran are working on the necessary environmental permits. It's unfortunately gonna take longer than we would have liked to because of the amount of wetlands that are gonna be disturbed. Also, we're dealing with just as populations not in that area specifically, but nearby enough that we'll have to go through a MEBR review and everything like that.
Yep, no, we've had discussions with both, we call the bookends, you know, equity and in Rob, and continue to work on getting some agreements with them. We should be sitting down with them probably by falling week to start talking again.
You know, the celebrity of Chapter 40B is... Lip application's been formally filed with the state. So it's now at that level. There's nothing for us to be doing. We'll... It will take several months to go through the review there.
Great, yep, thank you. Carol, anything else? David?
Just a question, Charlie. Have we heard anything further from your last communication on the three home rule petitions that we have filed with the state?
Yes, so we did get a confirmation from Representative Sullivan that all three are now on the docket. We don't have information yet, and this was just... I mean, I think she filed them a number of days ago, but we had heard from her last week. And we'll just have to wait for a hearing date on all three. I'm gonna... Part of the discussion we had yes... Last week on the district included asking Chris Kenny to check in to see if we get to the end of the year, and the home rule petitions have not been accepted. Do we have to go through another town meeting to reapprove all three? Or in fact, would it make sense if we do have a fall town meeting to do that this fall? So we'll get some answers on that.
So we haven't heard back from Chris?
No, from Chris, no.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you.
No, I just encourage everybody to go to library Wednesday night. I think 125... I was the director when it was 100-year anniversary. What's that?
When it opened?
Yeah, no, for the 100th anniversary. I was director, and we did a whole year. I know, right?
Look, if you want to look that good at that age...
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's what I was trying to say.
But we did a lot that year for the 100th anniversary, and we even had a dance with Dale and the Duds.
Okay.
Shocking. I know, right? Well, we weren't married yet. Tomorrow, tomorrow is our 25th wedding anniversary. I'll just throw that out there, too, and then I'll stop.
So now, now we've covered Tuesday.
That's right. Tuesday, Dale and Carol. Wednesday, the library. Thursday, Dale and the Duds. Saturday, we sparkle. It's a good week to be in East Bridgewater.
It is.
I agree.
Every week's a good week to be in East Bridgewater.
Okay, that being said, I guess I'll look for a vote to adjourn and then go into a session.
That gives session, yeah.
And we're not returning, right?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn open session and go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Firefighters, superior officers, clerical, DPW dispatches, COA director, fire chief, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 38, Paragraph 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation as the chair has determined that this open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's litigating position in a matter involving Town of East Bridgewater versus Ritter Farm.
Second.
All right.
And we will not be coming back to open session.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Steve Sheedy here.
Thank you.
Carol Julius, aye.
Just begun, aye.
Thank you. We'll see you during the week.
See you this week.